Regarding three oh one Main Street also relates to two severance applications. A B twenty four, twenty nineteen and B twenty five, twenty nineteen. Uh, which all pertain to the same six point three hectare site. Uh, south of of the hamlet of Newburgh itself. So the property, as mentioned, is is just over six hectares in size with approximately three hundred and twenty five meters of road frontage on Main Street. Um, and through the Committee of Adjustment in the fall of twenty nineteen. Uh, on October second, the Committee of Adjustment approved provisionally that the applicants be uh permitted to subdivide the landholding into three separately conveyable lots. On uh, on the, on the severance sketch, uh, as well as the site plan. It details those three separate parcels, parcels, one, two, and three. And that is what has essentially instructed or informed the zoning bylaw amendment that's before you tonight. So separate site specific zoning has been crafted for each separately conveyable parcel. So just to, just to say that again is we've essentially got one application for a zoning bylaw amendment that we have broke out as it applies to the current landholding today. But in the future, it will be applied to three separate lots with individual zoning pertaining to each lot. So the northernmost parcel, parcel one, is the smallest of the, of the three. Uh, and it abuts the store at the corner of the intersection of Main Street and County Road one. It's parcel one, approximately one hectare in size with seventy meters of road frontage. Uh, and that parcel is proposed to accommodate a self-storage facility. Uh, as well as um, what in our zoning bylaws is defined as being a garden and nursery sales and supply establishment. Um, so very most familiar to that would be Pike Farms in Kingston. Um, where you're coming and picking up gravels or um, so top soils, et cetera, mulch. Um, for uh, home gardening. And then your self-storage center, uh, buildings or separate buildings that are uh, all standalone. That you uh, that are constructed of steel and have no need for water or septic uh, a- at all. So on that northernmost parcel one, there's been a site-specific hamlet commercial, so a C one dash two zone. That's been crafted to allow for those additional permitted uses. Um, and the rationale for why this zoning amendment is required is the entirety of the parcel right now is zone rural. Um, so introducing a hamlet commercial zone uh, to permit those additional commercial uses. Uh, it does trigger a zoning bylaw amendment application. Uh, as you know, when we look at zoning amendment applications, we look to our higher level policies. And that those policies are found in our township official plan, our county of Lennox, Addington official plan, and the provincial policy statement. Just the most applicable to this is that the township's official plan, as well as the county's official plan, has a portion of this parcel uh, owned by the Whalens. Um, as being designated hamlet. So that northernmost parcel, parcel one, as you see on the survey sketch. It actually follows the hamlet designation boundary. So that the entire parcel that's to be rezoned for commercial uses is located within that hamlet boundary. Uh, and the hamlet boundary are, are, are areas in the municipality, obviously, that allow for a mix of uses. They allow for an increased density of residential development. And they seek to facilitate institutional commercial uses. So um, both with our township's official plan and our county's official plan. That rezoning amendment, rezoning and to that site-specific hamlet commercial zone. Uh, this proposal to, to intensify that area of the site is uh, in keeping with that upper level policy set. Now, we're all very familiar with site plan control. Uh, now through our recent uh, multiple applications for site plan. And I do want to confirm that this portion of the subject property. So that parcel one, the one hectare piece that's proposed to be rezoned for hamlet commercial. Will be subject to site plan control. And this is the uh, this is the exact application in which site plan control lends the best use uh, for. So things such as onsite lighting, um, onsite maneuverability, parking spaces. How that property integrates and relates to the neighboring properties. Um, from a compatibility perspective. All of that gets regulated through our sites, through our site plan control process. And that's what we are continuing to work through with the applicants. So we're not here tonight with a full, complete site plan control application. We're here just for the zoning to introduce the uses. Uh, and then refine the site plan as we move forward through the technical review. So that's our first, that's the first parcel, sorry, uh, that's incorporated on the six point two hectare site. Um, the next parcel, the mid portion parcel two is larger in size, three point two six hectares in size. Um, with approximately a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty seven meters of road frontage on Main Street. That parcel is currently developed with a single-family dwelling. It's dilapidated, um, but it is still standing and there are accessory structures that are also accommodated on that site. All of those buildings are, are proposed to be retained through this processing of these applications or this application. And in the future, it's my understanding from the applicants that is their desire to, to remove and reconstruct the new single-family dwelling on that parcel. Um, in generally the same location of that existing dwelling. So this site-specific zoning uh, that is proposed for this parcel. Uh, this is an RU dash H, sorry, RU dash eight uh, zone. And the permissions that are to be added are agricultural and agricultural uses. And the rationale for why the applicant slash staff are considering the introduction of agricultural uses is simply for the fact that that portion of this parcel is currently farmed. It's, it's, it's used for agricultural, for haying. Uh, and we want to ensure that that use may be considered. And we're already going through a zoning amendment process to ensure that the lot areas and the lot frontages are compliant with what's been presented to the Committee of Adjustment. So we've introduced those in the site-specific zone. Um, but essentially it, it, it's to facilitate the construction of a new single-family dwelling. The southernmost portion of this landholding, so parcel three, which is smaller in area, two hectares approximately, with a hundred and ten meters of road frontage. Has what's called a quarry on, on the site sketch on the survey that was completed. That's if you've been to the property, uh, it, it was, I, what I believe, a former quarry, some rock aggregate was extracted out of, out of that site. Um, and the applicant is proposing to continue to use that property for essentially an, an equipment or a material storage site. Um, and, and not, not quarry the parcel in terms of extraction um, with approvals through the ministry um, to, to bring in a substantial amount of, of material. But really one to, to store for the material that would be sold at the, at the northernmost parcel, parcel one, through the landscaping depot contractor yardic area. So the, so the site-specific zoning that's proposed for this RU dash nine site, which is, which is parcel number three, is very specific and very prohibitive. It would prevent the construction of a single-family dwelling. Uh, and I say that, and it's important to note that it would prevent that because of the neighboring barn, like existing active livestock facility uh, owned by Lynch, I believe, on the opposite, on the west side of Main Street. Um, so there's an MBS setback, an ARC associated with that active livestock facility that extends over and prevents sensitive land use development from being introduced in close proximity to it. So through the severance applications, through the Committee of Adjustment, staff noted that. Um, presented that to the committee, to the applicant, and ensured that they were aware to the fact that those limitations would be placed on that portion of the lands. Um, it also limits the outdoor storage. So the site-specific rural zone for that southernmost portion of the parcel restricts where the outdoor storage of equipment and material may be located uh, to ensure that it's to ensure that the visibility of Main Street is kept as opposed to um, becoming a, you know, quote unquote, unsightly. Uh, the storage and material is not one that triggers site plan control. Um, whereas the, so the northern parcel does, and we get to regulate that through, you know, drawings and registration on title. Um, so we've, we've built some of that into the RU dash nine zone, into that southernmost portion uh, of the property. So that, I think, uh, provides an overview of the three site-specific zones that, that are proposed to be introduced through this application for the subject property. I do, uh, again, want to mention that this application went to the Committee of Adjustment in the fall of twenty nineteen. It was approved provisionally, and one of the provisions was that the applicant successfully rezoned the property uh, to ensure that the uses are, are permitted and ensure that the sizes are adequate uh, of those parcels. So through this process, uh, we are working through satisfying those conditions as the applicant then continues to satisfy additional, additional conditions outside of this zoning amendment process. In addition to what the public notification that was provided in the fall with the site, with the Committee of Adjustment applications. For tonight's meeting, uh, this is applicable to all three applications that are before you. Um, but I do want to mention it. There was um, all three forms of public notice provided. So mailouts were sent out to the hundred and twenty meter radius uh, of the subject property because of a zoning bylaw amendment. There was also notice provided in the Napa and Beaver, and the signage was posted on site. So all of that was completed in accordance with the Planning Act. And to date, staff have not received any questions or concerns from any of the neighboring members of the public um, with respect to this rezoning application. And that's consistent with the, the input or level of input we received when processing the consent applications um, as well. So I think that's uh, an overview of, of what's before you tonight from a zoning perspective. I'm, uh, the applicant is, has joined us on the call. We are um, able to, I'm able to answer any questions from a zoning perspective, site plan, et cetera. And the applicant could probably clarify uh, better intentions, uh, if you may have questions specific to what that development uh, may be. So thank you for that and uh, happy to answer your question.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Jason or the applicant? Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, uh, for Jason. Jason, the parcel two, where they're thinking of building a, a residence. Um, does that, is it okay with the MBS or whatever? Because the farm's right across the road from it. Is it because there's a building there now that it's okay?
Yeah, the M- Sorry, through, through you, um, the, because of the existing dwelling, although it's unoccupied and, and abandoned. The, the parcel being developed with that uh, residence or that sensitive land use in the past negates the MBS calculation from that portion of the parcel. So we're able to, they're able to use that uh, to, to ensure that the, the redevelopment of that area can continue.
Okay, thank you.
More, any more questions for Jason or the applicant? Go ahead, John. Can't hear you. No. I'll, I'll go to Wenda, then I'll go back to you. Maybe they can get you straightened out. Go ahead, Wenda, then we'll go back to John. Can't hear you, Wenda.
There you go.
You got your voice up.
Okay, just a little more uh, clarification about parcel number one. So it's going to be um, rezoned to commercial. And you said right now it's RU, I didn't hear what you, what, what it was, Jason. RU, but it is part of that farm. So are we having any, are we gonna entertain any problems with um, changing quote unquote, farmland? And it, it's not bad land in there, I don't think. It's sort of at the bottom of a hill, so I would imagine there's some fairly good soil in there. Uh, do you see any problems with changing it from a, a farm usage to a commercial?
Through you, uh, Mr. Chair, no. The, the southernmost, sorry, the northernmost portion of this parcel in which is proposed to be converted or rezoned to the hamlet commercial zone. Although it makes up the larger and comprises that farm. It's, it falls within the hamlet boundary. So it falls exactly to be aligned with that Newburgh hamlet boundary, the southern extent of it. Uh, so although it's zoned rural to, to refine sort of the agricultural uses that you may explore, may, you know, come accustomed to in a rural zone. The larger or the, the bigger intent of that area is to be built out with hamlet, more hamlet uh, type uses. Uh, and by having uses or having land sort of, sorry, in the hamlet designation. They're exempt from MBS setbacks. So um, that's, I forgot to mention that to, to Mr. Richmond's question. When you're, when you're, so when you follow that hamlet designated boundary across, the, the MBS setbacks are no longer applicable for that. Um, and obviously the middle, mid portion of the site, they are no longer applicable because of the existing development. And the southern portion, they are continued to be applicable. Hence the reason we're rezoning it so that they can't be developed for sensitive land use. Um, but in short, to your, to your question, no. Um, from my opinion, from a planning perspective, uh, looking at both our plan and the county's plan. Um, it's, it's my opinion that rezoning that northern portion parcel one to commercial zone is actually more in keeping with the greater intent of the plan um, of, for the village of Newburgh than it would be to leaving it and retaining it as agricultural law.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna try to go back to John.
Thank, thank you, Eric. Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my, my question is about parcel three, uh, Jason, and you said that there would be screening. Um, I've just been scrolling through the, uh, your report and I can't find the screening provision. Is it meant to be treed or fenced, or is that the option of the, uh, the landowner?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, so I'm looking at the site-specific bylaw. Um, deputy vice. So RU, RU dash nine in, in the actual bylaw. Um, it lists four provisions. So it adds a additional permitted uses to be a contractor's yard. The second is a prohibitive use, and that's a residential use, so you're no longer able to, to develop for a sensitive land use. Section three is a performance standard, so the lot area and lot frontage that ought to be satisfied. Uh, and then number four talks about outdoor storage. Four A is outdoor storage of equipment associated with the contractor's yard shall be permitted in locations on-site that are visually screened from Main Street. Notwithstanding the above, open storage of material, i.e. aggregate and soil, may be located on a site that is visible. So I didn't get into the level of specificity of uh, deciduous or coniferous trees or a height of a berm, et cetera. Um, you will notice I did that on the um, on the commercial zone portion of this land. So that's where landscaping strips and buffers um, are required to be installed along Main Street and along the abutting residential uses. So the residential uses that front County Road one. Um, and that actually would be adjacent to this uh, storage center use. They're required to be buffered from a visual uh, uh, and, and berm. Uh, again, it's, it's more of a site plan. It's built into the zoning to ensure that it's, it's provided, but it's a site plan discussion. Um, but, but no, the, the level of detail on that parcel three is not one that requires berms and vegetation.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions or comments? Anything for Mr. Whalen? Apparently not. Okay, so we, Jason, you might have just received this report, then we'll deal with it later on tonight.
Yeah, so I've, uh, just as, as mentioned, this is our, our public meeting component to allow any members of the public um, questions or comments related to our bylaw. It is on our agenda for, for uh, meeting in an hour.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the, draw, go to the-
Whatever you want.
I'll go to Barlow or the other one, Jason, is your people there?
Your worship. You should just- To receive that information presented by staff.
Okay, motion to receive. Moved by Wenda, second by Cherry, all in favor? Carrie. Okay, which one you want to go to now, Jason?
It is.
Okay, that is okay. That's a D O three, two thousand twenty zoning bylaw amendment. That is, go ahead, Jason.
Thank you. I believe we have the applicant uh, with us tonight on the call as well. Um, this application, similar to the last, pertains and relates to a uh, severance application. Uh, application BO nine, twenty twenty, which was heard by the Committee of Adjustment in March of twenty twenty. Um, the application is locate, or the subject property, sorry, is located uh, at the intersection of County Road one and Gibson Road. Uh, it's a corner lot with frontage on both streets, hundred and forty-four meters of frontage on Gibson Road and approximately eighty-seven meters of frontage on County Road one. The subject property is somewhat irregular shaped in that the southern portion of the parcel extends beyond uh, in behind the two existing lots that are developed with frontage on Gibson Road. And the subject property itself is already developed with a single-family dwelling. So just a bit of a, a history, the applicants initiated this process in twenty seventeen. Um, they made applications for severance in twenty seventeen with a slightly altered parcel configuration. Um, essentially, the, the parcel's two point zero five hectares in size. So mathematically, it is possible to make the subject properties, both the severed and the retained parcel comply with the township's minimum required one point zero hectare uh, lot area. Um, but in order to do so, the parcel configuration would be very irregular. Um, just based on the way the lots are, are currently configured. So that was the proposal in twenty seventeen. And from my understanding, the applicants ultimately withdrew the application for severance due to the increasing costs and, and the frustrations associated with obtaining such approval. Um, after my arrival here in the township, uh, the applicants come in and we had a meeting as to the, to the next steps and how to move forward. And the, a, a subsequent or a new application was submitted for severance. So again, similar to the last application, um, this Committee of Adjustment, uh, the Committee of Adjustments, sorry, approved this consent application in, in um, the spring. Uh, with one of the conditions being that the applicant successfully rezone the subject properties for two reasons. One, to recognize an undersized parcel area on the retained parcel as well as recognize a reduced setback from the Yarker provincially significant wet line, wetland, sorry, in accordance with Quinney Conservation commentary. So the, as you can see, the subject retained parcel is approximately point seven hectares. And the proposed severed parcel is approximately one point three hectares um, in area. And both of those parcels exceed the minimum frontage requirements. The proposed retained parcel of point seven hectares is point three hectares less than what's required per the zoning bylaw. Um, staff required the applicant to demonstrate the functionality of that site. So confirming with a um, professional engineer that the existing dwelling on-site development, including septic, well, uh, access, pool, detached garage, et cetera, may all adequately be accommodated on a zero point seven hectare parcel as opposed to our minimum lot area requirement of, of one point zero hectare. And Concord Engineering provided a letter, which has been included a part of your package. It was also considered by the Committee of Adjustment in their consideration of moving this application forward um, to demonstrate no adverse effects on either uh, the subject retained, subject severed and/or any abutting parcel from a lot area perspective. Now, moving into the um, setback from the adjacent provincially significant wetland. The, as you can see on the sketch, the surveyor has detailed where the building envelope would be located uh, to ensure that the minimum fifteen meter setback from the edge of floodplain um, uh, associated with the wetland, the Yarker provincially significant wetland is maintained for both um, the dwelling and the sewage disposal system. So that has been detailed on the proposed severed parcel. And I'm just looking for the draft bylaw here as we speak. So that, that has been detailed, uh, and as part of the package of tonight's uh, information, the Quinney Conservation Authority comments have been included. Quinney makes reference to the Concord Engineering report that was submitted in support. Uh, and also makes comment to say that an environmental impact study um, was not submitted. And their office would not necessitate such a study, uh, in, in their opinion, to be able to support such a request. That said, staff have worked with the applicant through the processing to submit a um, a scope. Which like we, we call here at the township, a scoped environmental impact study. That's one from, uh, it's to promote uh, education to landowners as opposed to hiring a consultant to review the impacts. We have professionals at the Conservation Authority who are environmental professionals confirming that they see no adverse impact on the adjacent provincially significant wetland. So from an education perspective, the applicant completed a scoped environmental impact study to understand how some actions of their own on-site may or may not adversely affect uh, the neighboring provincially significant wetland. And that's been completed. Uh, it was a required or is a required condition of the provisional approval uh, of the consent application. Uh, it's just one that Quinney Conservation didn't consider to be as completed by Ecological Services, for example. So that, that's it. The, as, so to, to further this, the site-specific bylaw that is before us tonight for consideration and members of the public is to rezone the entirety of this subject property, so both the severed and the retained parcels to an art site-specific RU dash eleven zone. Um, to ensure that the development of a single-family dwelling uh, may be constructed on that single, on that uh, on those separately conveyable lots. Uh, it refines it, or if we left it in an RU zone as a parent, just our general parent, RU zone. That permits a two, two-unit dwelling, so this is refining it. Um, as well as it recognizes the provincial, uh, performance standards of frontage and area as well as uh, wetland setback requirements. So those are all contained within the bylaw itself. The county of Lennox and Addington has provided comment as the frontage is to that on County Road one. They have no objections, uh, and an entrance permit has already been granted. The applicant uh, is all with us, and it's their intention to start the construction of a single-family dwelling. It's my understanding they wish to start that as soon as possible. Um, there are some additional conditions of the provisional approval that ought to still be satisfied. However, this is one of those. Through the consent process and the Committee of Adjustment approval, staff did not receive any comment or concern from any of the neighbors. Uh, again, consistent with the previous application tonight. This zoning amendment application was notified by three forms of notice. Uh, onsite signage, mailout to neighbors, as well as in the Napa and Beaver. And there's been no communication, uh, received or concern received from staff uh, as it relates to this proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Jason? Any questions for the applicant or the applicant have a, go ahead, Kevin? Can't hear you. Can't hear you. You're on mute. Wendy, do you have your hand up?
Yes.
Yeah, go, go ahead, we'll let Kevin, get Kevin straightened out here, go ahead.
Okay, so Jason, just, um, can you go back a minute to the, the um, statements that you made regarding a scope? An environmental impact study um, done or, or initiated by our office? Can you elaborate on that a little bit more? Being that Quinney didn't require an environmental impact- Can you elaborate on that a little bit more, being that Quinney didn't require an environmental impact assessment?
Certainly. So you can see in the comments from Quinney Conservation that they did not require the applicant to complete, and they would not be recommending that the applicant complete an environmental impact study. And when Quinney Conservation typically requires applicants to complete environmental studies, environmental impact studies, it's to review the site as it relates to the policy sets and the applicable laws contained within the provincial regulations. So to do so, to review the 2020 provincial policy statement and determine that, from an example, from this example, that the proposed lot creation will not have an adverse effect on the natural hazards or from a natural hazards or from a natural heritage perspective, you need to be what I would consider an environmental expert to be able to cite those and provide your professional opinion that those pieces of legislation are being adhered to. Through the commentary from Quinney, we received that confirmation as a municipality. So we received it twice. We received it through the commentary of the severance application, and we also received their confirmation through the zoning amendment application, which we have in front of you. So staff are satisfied from a legislative perspective that there's no environmental concern related to the natural hazards and natural heritage policies of the provincial policy statement from Quinney. That said, the applicant, and the applicant's on the call today, the applicant can speak to their knowledge and their awareness of what it's going to be like residing or developing adjacent to a provincially significant wetland. And as a, from a stewardship perspective, to, from my perspective also, there's a, there's a level of education that you can provide to someone with respect to them living next to an environmental feature. Just because somebody writes a report that says there's not going to be an adverse effect from a natural hazard perspective as it relates to old regulation, Ontario Regulation 31909, that doesn't mean a lot to many people after that's filed on the shelf, and it's good. But from an applicant to understand where that delineated marshland or wetland feature is and, and, you know, the importance of silt fencing and the location of driveways and the importance of impermeable surface and how that may or may adversely affect a wetland from a runoff perspective, where your septic is located to ensure that any effluent, you know, travels in the right direction should there be an effect, an adverse effect or, sorry, an unseen circumstance. Those are the types of questions that we've built into a sculpt environmental study that the applicant, Mr. Fittis, has completed. And I think they, Mr. Fittis may speak up, but in my opinion, that provided the applicant, the on-the-ground knowledge of what it's like to reside in close proximity to an environmental feature and become a better steward of the land.
Thank you.
You okay there now, Kevin?
I think so, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now, did you have a question?
Yeah, just the two lots to the south of the retained unit. There's housing there, isn't there, Jason? On Gibson Road, sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
There's two houses there, isn't there? Yeah, okay, that's, I just, I thought there was, it didn't show it on there, but thank you.
Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, I think we should receive this. There's houses closer actually to the wetland than this property is going to be. There's houses across the road and right on the edge of the wetland, and one actually in the wetland there. To my knowledge, there's never been any adverse effect. This wetland is like a lot of places, 50 years ago, it had a fair bit of water in it. Now it's only spring runoff. It's just boggy, marshy. It's not full of water like it used to be, and it's dried up most of the year. I don't see an issue with it, I think we should receive it.
Make that a motion?
Yes.
Motion to receive, need a second there. Kevin, any more questions, comments? Anything from Mr. Fittis? All favor the motion? Motion is carried. Okay, we're going to go to the third one with D02 2020 zoning bylaw amendment, T and E Small Engine, Barlow.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll be quicker on this one. My, so everyone, I suspect, is familiar with T and E Small Engines in Croydon, just east of County Road 41 on County Road 14 on the north side, north side of the road. There's a single-family dwelling located on the subject property, municipally known as 55 County Road 14. And as well, there's a small engine service and repair establishment on that property. I would say the existing business, T and E Small Engines. Can you turn it? Is everyone okay? Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. So T and E Small Engine, sorry, is what I would consider is a rural commercial use, which has grown organically over the last few years to become a self-standing business, commercial business in our municipality that serves a great, far-reaching crowd from a small engine perspective. And at this time, the applicant is wishing to expand the small business into essentially accommodating an additional building, a storage building on-site. And this is the opportune time in which the applicant has applied for a site-specific zoning bylaw amendment to bring the portion of the subject property into conformity to allow for that expansion of the existing business, as well as the continued use of the property from a residential perspective as well. So through this application, you'll see on the site-specific bylaw Schedule A, the property is quite large, and it has frontage on both County Road 41 and County Road 14. And it's only proposed that this application rezone a portion of the site. So similar to the application of zoning amendments submitted by Tyner Construction on the corner of 41, 1041 and Stonehenge Road, staff worked with the applicant to refine the area of the site in which could be subject to the zoning as opposed to the entirety of the site because there are areas of a site that are better for different types of uses than others. And obviously, this proposal that we have before us would change very dramatically should the applicant change entirely the location of the commercial development on-site and move it over to the 40, County Road 41 frontage. So through this application, not only are we able to introduce the appropriate zoning for an appropriate use, we're also able to refine it on a site where that use may occur and may continue to occur without causing any concern in the future that we may have inadvertently overlooked by rezoning the whole parcel. So I just wanted to point that out because it is, it is something that I think is considerate here in that the RU10, the site-specific rural zone, it is only on that portion, one identified portion of the site. So as I mentioned, the applicant, the owner, Erica Barlow, and the business, T and E Small Engines, is seeking to bring that into conformity with our zoning bylaw and facilitate the expansion of the site by adding a storage building. It's approximately 222 square meters in size, so approximately 2,400 square feet that's shown on the site plan drawing to be located directly north of the parking area that exists with the existing driveway access off of County Road 14. It is designed so that it is related but somewhat secluded from the existing residents. I think when businesses grow organically, they sometimes coexist maybe a bit too close to the residents. And this is, this application and this new development is one to push it a bit further to the east and a bit further to the north to ensure that they are separated and standalone uses. The existing single-family dwelling that is tight to the road at approximately eight-meter setback off of County Road 14 will still and continue to be the prominent use of the site, even though the site-specific zoning allows for the small engine repair facility. That is at the rear. And I also want to point out to Deputy Reeve Wise, asked the questions about visibility and screening on an application previous tonight. This is one in which, in the site-specific bylaw, there's a requirement that any open storage be located no closer than the front building line of the existing single-family dwelling. And the reason for bringing provisions in through, to a zoning bylaw like this is that we want the prominent, as a municipality, the prominent feature of that single-family dwelling to exist on County Road 14. Although from a business and from an advertising perspective, you may want your product, we need that to coexist, and we want the prominence of the house to be, to be that along County Road 14. So just one other thing. The additional permitted uses in the draft bylaw that's before us tonight for consideration includes small engine sales and service establishment, marine sales and service establishment, and snowmobile and all-terrain sales and service establishment. For those of us who have been to T and E Small Engines, we know that they're not a business that operates in the sales of ATVs or snowmobiles or boats. And to me, from a land use planning perspective and from a professional planning perspective specifically, there's not much of a difference realistically if you're selling an ATV, if you're selling a lawnmower, if you're selling a sea doo, if you're selling a boat. Our bylaw seems to think there is because our zoning bylaw differentiates those three different uses with three separate definitions and standalone uses. So for that reason, I've incorporated all of those into this site-specific rural zone to ensure that the flexibility does exist for our applicant in the future, should they wish to tailor their business in a new direction. I, just moving through the bylaw itself, parking spaces are considered to be obviously required for guests at a minimum number of eight as well as minimum loading space size and number. We need one loading space for the dropping off and the influx of new material. And then I've already gone through the open storage component. So I think that's a summary, detailed, detailed summary of the site-specific bylaw that we have before us for T and E Small Engines. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Jason? Mr. Barlow have anything to say for counsel? I guess if not, have a motion, receive the report, moved by Doug, seconded by John, all in favor? Motion is carried, thank you, Jason. Okay, if that's, is that it for you, Jason?
That's all I've got for the next 40 minutes.
Okay, I have the confirming bylaw of the meeting. Move by Debbie, seconded by Kevin, all in favor? Motion to adjourn, John and Cherry. See you guys in half hour or so.